I'm God. Invisible with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
A roll call.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
Here.
Counselor Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Sumner.
Here.
Introduction to media. Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before the city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into a report. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. Those joining tonight's meeting via Zoom will automatically be muted upon entry. And you will need to identify your full name if not already attached. If you wish to speak, please click on the raise your hand feature located in the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen. Reminder to council, speak into your microphone when talking so everyone can hear you. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about up agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. I have one up on agenda for Aaron Meyer.
Karen Meyer, eighteen twenty six Aspern. I wanted to talk about the minutes from last month. Usually when we have an update from, I'm quote hard, we have, you know, like something like this in the minutes. And we had like three lines, three sentences on this one. And what I really wanted to see expanded for the people in the city is it says Attorney Chad Jacobs explained the term low barrier in regards to Hastings Village. And I think we, the rest of us need to know what that means. I think the citizens need to know that the way that Hastings Village is set up right now, that anybody from anywhere can come at any time and park their tent to stay for any length of time at Hastings Village. The citizens do not know that. It's not ever really been explained. And it was kind of rushed over at the meeting last time, but I'd like to see it in a minute. So I'd like to see the citizens understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be a, a presentation for the homeless village next meeting. Just wanted everybody to know that like our next. Uh, right to Melanie.
Yeah. Yes.
Is there any other on agenda?
Um, no.
Under the consent agenda, September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes, no motion.
Sure.
A question is second to approve consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? When the.
Counselor Woods.
Hi.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Are.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Bye.
Motion carries.
On the council business ordinance ten ninety-three, regulating occupancy of recreational vehicles, second reading and adoption.
An ordinance of the city of Sutherland adding a new chapter eight point three zero to the Sutherland municipal code regulating the occupancy of recreational vehicles.
That report. No motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the order approved on the ten ninety-three, second reading and adoption of recreational vehicles. And adding the chapter eight point three oh to this government. I'll say.
My motion is second to approve ordinance ten ninety-three, regulating occupancy of recreational vehicles, second reading and adoption as presented. Any discussion?
Well, I know. I think what's gonna happen if somebody's house gets impaired with the living and not being still in their yard by the magic. Or when somebody misses that needs to either check their, there's just a lot of situations where it could be possible with somebody to be. And now they're, they're always. They don't care about people have life. They think they want on their own path. They're related people. Any other thought?
Any other discussion?
Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle. Can you state your reason? I know, it's to state his reason. Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Public hearing and resolution twenty twenty-three point one three supplemental budget adjustment. That's a floor.
Mayor, Counselor, Kami Corbin, Finance Director. And we are bringing this supplemental budget for some changes. And as you can read in the explanation of the, in the resolution, there were several costs that have increased since we did our initial budget projection, just part of inflation and things that you can't foresee. And then the biggest part of this budget adjustment, of course, is the line item for the loan to urban renewal. And what happened is that we initially, when we were working on the budget in April, May, felt, thought that those funds, they were going to be used in the prior fiscal year, last fiscal year. And as it turns out, the projects that were earmarked for some of those funds haven't started and are into this fiscal year. And because we thought those funds were going to be expended last year, we did not put any budgetary appropriation in the current year budget for urban renewal loan. And in the urban renewal budget, we specifically referenced that we would need some outside funding sources. Here we are on this side of July first. Turns out those projects hadn't started and the money is still available. And the last budget resolution we did was from general fund wastewater and water reserve. And those are a shorter term loan than from the general fund. So carrying forward that philosophy, we just are instead of now going out for outside funding sources, since the money is available internally out of our reserves and it's less expensive to do it that way. We are asking for that loan to be done with internal money, both general fund and enterprise funds. And reserve funds are earmarked for infrastructure. We felt like it was a good fit. We're not taking it from any kind of operational, immediate needs or loan repayment funds, any of that. And just as a reminder, the projects that are spelled out in the urban renewal budget were two hundred and fifty thousand for improving the parking lots behind backside, the body shop and C Casa Florida, not, not C Casa. So the Sutherland, thank you. Twenty-five thousand to reimburse the Sutherland Water Control District for the impacts to their funds caused by urban renewal. Two hundred and seventy-five K for other downtown improvements, including several facade grants that are already, their applications have already been submitted. Sixty thousand for the remaining work on the Main Street renovation of the bank building, as well as tens of thousands for the audit and administrative support and the annual report that has to be done separately from the audit. Now, all of these total to more than the five hundred and fifty thousand, but there are still some reimbursements that we will receive from the Main Street grant. So it'll all balance out. The weird thing about urban renewal is even if you have tax increment funding, funding in the bank, so tax increment that we have already received, which we do, that cannot be spent directly on program expenses and projects like this. You have to spend money. It's kind of weird, borrowed money, and the tax increment financing is used only to pay back debt. So some of these funds might be, you know, a three week loan, a two week loan. Basically, we're loaning the money and then when the tax resources come in, it could be repaid. And at that time, when we see what that's going to look like this year, we will come to you with an adjustment asking for the ability to repay these funds. So that is the largest part, obviously, of this budget adjustment. It includes both the adjustment to wastewater reserve, water reserve, and then we also have a change to the tourism motel tax fund because of some changes in the process. And we're changing up the, we've had some meetings, work group meetings, talking with the chamber and city council folks and working on the process. We want to be more transparent. We want to get the word out better. We, we want to incentivize people to submit funding applications for the tourism funds. And so trying to put that together in a little bit different vehicle, rewriting agreements that have been old, updating things, updating evaluation tools, going to do more of a public notice kind of a process for the review, the review of the funding application. So that's a fairly comprehensive change in process for that as well. Any questions? Okay.
Regarding the, the, the thing, is that, is that grant funding that is going to that?
So we.
Private building that's.
So it's a historic building and the only way it could be renovated is with some grant like this. And so was it a couple of years ago that we submitted for that grant, but first came to the council and the urban renewal agency asking for permission? The total renovation was going to be two hundred and sixty thousand and the grant was going to be two hundred. So sixty thousand of that is coming out of the urban renewal. Yes, most of it has been funded by a grant.
Okay, I have a question. Uh, raised by curiosity, and it says, there is a, a proposed change to the TRP structure, which requires a budget adjustment as well as partnership on a proposed school district plan. What does that mean?
Do you want, or you want me to answer that?
Well, as you know, I'm gonna try to answer both questions, first dealing with the new structure. So the chamber said, you know, we're not doing the best for people wanting to apply for transit rent actually. How about we give it back to city and the city allocate? And we proposed a collaboration, both the chamber and the council. So you, at a meeting previously, appointed Council President Hamilton and Counselor Daigle to be part of that new team. So we have been meeting and creating improved systems with accountability and appropriate recognition of where the money comes from and who it's going to go to. And we're feeling pretty good about it. I think the, the, what we did at our last meeting was good. In the meantime, going back over a year ago, just in the middle of COVID, the school district asked the city and the chamber, we would partner with them and put up a new kind of state of the art announcement sign to replace someone that's here in Tunkar Park.
Close to where we think at the same location.
Maybe, as you recall, some of you going way back in two thousand fourteen, we applied for a grant for MoDOT to put the same sign similar to what we're getting out at the visitor's center. So right now, these monies are being set aside to cover our equal share. The school district's going to cover fifty and the city and the chamber are going to cover the other fifty. And that's what these TRT revenues being set aside to do. Determining the location will be a partnership decision between the school district, the chamber and the cities, depending on where, where best to fit it. That, at the end of the day, the discussion is at that corner with all the crossing with the student. That's probably not the best place to put it because people are crossing and you have people driving looking at the sign. So we're looking at moving it somewhere from there all the way to the visitor's center, somewhere that would get the highest visibility, but it's a pretty significant, you know, technologically engineered screen that is going to be pretty cool.
So it'll be a place for the.
Yes, sir. And it'll be pretty dynamic, you'll show videos on it and have all kinds of things. The city, the chamber and the school district will have some sort of control mechanism for upgrading.
Thank you.
And now we'll open a public hearing. And now is available for public comment. Is there any public comment?
This is my first time ever being there in meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Say your name and.
My name is Sean New at nine two seven East Third Avenue. I've been resident, living in Sutherland, Oregon my whole life. I'm here to advocate against another camp, homeless camp, because.
So this is with the, this, this part of the budget.
This part of the budget. See, I don't, I'm, I want to talk about your guys' part, or you want to allocate funds, build tiny homes, that's what the meeting is about. They post it on the Sutherland page.
Yeah, that was a lie. We're not doing that.
So when, when is that meeting?
It's, we're not going to allocate funds for a tiny home or a tiny boat over there.
Okay.
Never were.
Okay. That's good to know. Whoever runs that page needs to make sure, or city council needs to make sure that page is ran properly because the lies and having citizens being pissed off, no offense.
We're not running that page.
Okay. But.
What you need to do, we can call City Hall and get your. Call one of us.
So this isn't about the homeless community that you guys are gonna continue to build?
No.
Add on?
No, we're not gonna add on or build.
Oh, great. It'd be nice to rehabilitate those homeless people. I mean.
Or you could listen to some of the cheating things you can hear about tiny homes.
Yeah, that will be tiny homes, but that's a completely separate agenda a year or so down the road.
Right now we have a public comment on the, with the finance report that we just talked about.
I apologize. I just needed to advocate against it because there's that campus for driving still, though, I mean. I have a cousin that sells drugs there, so.
We have two of the residents here too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other public comment on this financial point? You know? I do. Okay.
Okay. Karen Meyer on Aspern. Um, Michelle, when I talked to you at the mayor's meeting, we, we talked about these urban renewal funds, you said that it was to buy the property behind central, the, the to put tiny homes on where all those trailers are.
I said that that was one of the things that they were working on is refurbishing that trailer park. That could be used, that could be used.
So we just got told by Jerry that it would never work for tiny homes.
No, what I said, we're not building tiny homes exclusively for homeless people. We are working with, and if you look at our urban renewal agency plan, it, the whole plan all along was to eradicate blight. Part of the urban renewal money will be to eradicate blight at, that, i.e. clean up that park and to build and work in partnership with HUD and other agencies to build affordable housing complex or community that will have tiny homes as well as apartments, duplexes and other unique housing legitimate homes for people to live in, not just the home.
Right.
That's what we're doing.
And in April, at the meeting, it was stated that you were going to use urban renewal funds to buy property to put tiny homes on, and some of those tiny homes were to be for the homeless.
At some point in the future, the plan is in collaboration that we would use urban renewal monies to eradicate blight, which would be in some form of either cleaning up that park or investing in a a variety of things to eradicate blight that may or may not include tiny homes, but not just for the homeless.
Yeah, just to be clear, you have talked about using urban renewal funds for tiny homes for the homeless.
I'm sorry, but this isn't what this public hearing is for.
It is.
No, that's not what we're talking about on this, on what is on this sheet right now. It's not talking about doing any tiny homes in any part of the city right now.
Okay, I object to transferring money from the water reserve or from the wastewater reserve. Um, those are reserve funds, they're enterprise funds, they're not government funds that you collect, you get government funds from taxes, fees or fines. They're funds that come from the people so that they can buy water and have sewer. They're the people's funds, they're for people. For the people to get wastewater and sewer, and I object to you taking that money from those funds.
Thank you. Short clip.
Hi, Bruce Penn Gill, three zero one Hawthorne Street. And no, I'm not going to bring up any of that. But I do agree with her that I object to the use of these funds that were voted on by the people, the city of Sutherland, to use those funds to build a new water treatment plant for the city and to cover those costs involved. I don't know what your sewer bill, water bill is, but mine's over a hundred a month. And now you're gonna take those funds and spend them on something else? Those are restricted funds. They should be used for what they're supposed to be used for, nothing.
What you propose, what you perceive those funds.
Wait, let me, let me, can I, can I just respond to that just a minute? So this is a short term loan fund. It's not going to be a permanent distribution. And those two reserve funds are specifically for equipment and vehicles for the water and the wastewater reserve. The debt service and the construction money is separate from that. So these are specifically for those, uh, infrastructure, again, equipment and that type of thing, that there were no other expenditures planned for, for this year.
My understanding, when, when we voted on that, was that those funds could use for a new, a needed new water treatment plant.
That there is a water treatment plant being in process. I'll let Aaron respond to that, but this wasn't a vote.
It was approved by the city or voted by, however that process went down. Uh, it was approved by the people apparently that we needed a new treatment plant. And so that we were, and you're, the amount of money that was going to be raised was to build that new treatment plant, not to be paying, loaning that money out to be paying bills that need to, that will definitely need to be paid back because that's, that money is specifically tagged for that water treatment plant.
Just for the record, we are just completing that treatment plant upgrade. It should be completely done here in November. So that did get done. We have a new facility at Cooper Creek and now an upgraded facility at Non-Bruck.
But, and now you have money to loan out to pay other things.
Well, like she said, it's a real short term loan and not.
I would like to see a reimbursement. If you got extra money that we're paying in that you don't need, I would like to see a reimbursement. Thank you.
I'm closing the public comment hearing. On the resolution twenty twenty-three point one three supplemental budget adjustment, no motion.
It was no way, of course, resolution twenty twenty-three point one.
A motion is second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three point one three supplemental budget adjustment as presented. Any discussion?
So my understanding is this is a loan and it's paid back.
It's a short term loan that will be paid back.
Could be a couple of weeks, it could be a month.
Do you have a, a estimate of when it will be paid back?
I really don't. It depends on how the tax increment fin- financing flows back in in November, and those will be the.
Be, is given and that's the end of the story.
And those will be the first funds. Okay.
And get, and get your first return in November.
The big, the big one should, is supposed to be this year. I did not budget that yet because it was actually, the whole timing thing was a little weird, so.
I might add too, it is with interest.
Yeah.
Where it's, you're not collecting interest, but it's actually gonna be more money than what we borrow.
Any other discussion?
Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker.
Hi.
Counselor Smalley.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
Hi.
Mayor Sumner.
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the report, solar beam update.
That mayor, council, Aaron's one public works. Uh, as you may recall, we, uh, you know, we have a manganese problem at Cooper Creek, makes water hard to treat. So our answer, our experiment that we've been doing is to rent these solar beam mixers and put them up there. We got to, we put two of them in, in, uh, on June ninth. Uh, that's about three months ago. And that's about the time, the amount of time that they, uh, said we would realize that. Okay. Um, it's about the time that they said we'd realize our, our potential, whether we, whether we were gonna have a benefit from those or not. And I'm happy to report that our manganese is down, it's about a third of what it normally is this time of year. And it makes it treatable. It's at a level that we can, uh, use enough chemicals on it to treat it. So there's a few minor issues. Our dissolved oxygen is still a little lower than we want and our organics are still a little higher. But they claim if we keep these in, um, that those will continue to improve those numbers. Our trial basis is up in December. It was a six month trial, if you recall. And so, uh, we'll make the call then if we want to move from this rental lease agreement to a purchase. And I think we will want to do that, but the jury's still kind of out, but it does look like they are affecting our water possibly. I just want to give that.
So do you have any kind of a estimate on what?
Well, most of our gains have been after we started using non-Bruck again. If you recall, we were over our allotment at Cooper Creek three years before structure. So Alan has just been running that plant intermittently to get these raw numbers so we could kind of experiment. So it hasn't really saved us a lot this year, uh, chemical wise, because, like I said, when the numbers really ramp up is toward fall. And, uh, and so by then we were, we were back online at Non-Bruck. So I don't have these savings, um, really to report, but they should help us in the future. And especially if we get in a situation where we have to run Cooper later. You know, we have a, a breakdown at Non-P or something happens and we have to run that plant in these later months, August, September, October, then we will realize significant savings in camp. You're going to run them all later long. We're going to keep um running them briefly to get those raw numbers through December. We don't have to right now because Non-Porel's making good water and that's normally our and we've used up all of our allotment for this year uh out of Cooper Creek. We're over, we're out of compliance there, so. Our plan is not to, to run Cooper Creek uh for municipal water. We just want to keep our experiment going to see how the, how the raw numbers look as when we come to the November, December. I can complete the experiment.
You're saying that uh they benefited, so we, we derive a a decrease in the chemical process because of that?
Well, um yes and no. Like I said, we weren't really, when these numbers really started to show up, you know, they said it would be three to four months before we really saw the full potential. So we were still running the plant when we had those in for like fifty days and we hadn't seen an improvement yet. So we did not see a decrease in chemical use. Uh, now we have, but like I said, we're not really making water there now. Because we don't have to and we're over our our uh, our footage allotment. So next year we should see those, those decreases in chemical costs. If that's what you're.
Yes, I'm just wondering if there, if they would extend the trial at our, not the by, but the right, not deny it.
That lease deal was kind of set, and we can extend that. They did offer that, but it gets kind of more expensive. It gets um, there's diminishing returns, I think, on you know, the, every month we add on to the trial is money we don't get to put toward the purchase and uh I think we'll probably want to make that call in December. And that would be my, my thought. But it's good news overall. For sure.
Pretty manager, what?
The only thing I'll say is what you reiterated earlier is that we have Wayne and Pat. We've been meeting with state agencies and from community development, rock grant funds to HUD to uh our elected officials at looking where we want to go forward with our homeless agenda, which is still the three-pronged approach. We have thirty-seven about there now with about twenty-five that are in a case program manager and are doing fairly well. And our objective is, is when we look to with HUD and the other agencies to create uh alternative housing that is affordable for all people across the spectrum. Uh, with that would be included in that program. And they'll come next, next month and give, answer all the questions that some of you may have and maybe even have more.
Great. Council comments. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
I have a couple things. Well, we are in a way, we have an MOU, but when I say we, it's the homeless leadership team. And uh, I'm part of heart. And so we're continuing to work with them and other agencies to to solve the problem permanently. Our goal is to close that camp down. And the other thing I have, I just want to make an announcement. On Halloween, they should have my family doing another five yard. My grandson lets board do it every year. It's a real treat to have my yard all messed up. It's going to be every day in October, thirty point nine, thirty-first, and it runs from seven to nine thirty.
Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley.
I was just listening to people come in and talk about these different things. I think that citizens need to start coming for meetings and calling the city hall and getting a little better informed for coming down here. Saying these things are sorry, right? Getting more involved to fix their budget or fix our homeless camp. Oh. Find out what you can talk about for you. This comes from.
Counselor, does it happen?
He's not worth it.
That's exactly.
All you can reiterate with counsel, not like that.
Um, I just want to thank this Thomas Smalley and his family, I'm sure he was for the truck show last Saturday. I wasn't able to stop, but um it looked like there was a lot of people in black and it's great to have an event in Sutherland in October. So, and you got good weather. So what more could you ask?
Yes, I thought that was a great event. I, I thought it was going to be set up. Um, I wanted to just mention a little bit uh about our, our homeless camp, and I think that they're doing a great job working with it. Uh, in my shopping with the mayor, we had a pretty good turnout. We talked a lot about it. Some, just uh ancillary issues that are happening a little bit uh in the neighborhoods. And so one of the ideas that were brought out that could maybe help restore some of the issues that are happening at night is I'm wondering if there's a possibility to put up a fence in the in between uh down on Hawthorne uh towards the end between the church and the uh storage place. Because everybody's walking through there and then walking through the neighborhoods and all the night. Not making a lot of noise. That's something that I think is where the extension might be going. Wondering if that might be something we could do.
You should look into it. I think if that got blocked off, they would probably just head north to those sort of fur or Eddie Street.
I know they're coming through there to get to the uh store.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So we can, we could definitely.
I mean, it almost would be helpful that place at night, but not good roaming around at two, three, four o'clock in the morning. That was my idea, but I mean, that might be something to try. Think we could do that.
Or just simply ask them not to do it and see how it works.
Well, the neighbors have been trying that. That's not.
We can look into what that would entail, how long of a stretch, how we're kind of fencing and.
Yeah, didn't look like it was very big. I don't buy it. Okay. Yeah.
I own the church there on Hawthorne Street.
Yeah.
And my opinion is that the fence across there would be a very bad idea because I'm already experiencing them crossing over my fences. You have to do Eddie and okay, I called the police twice or three times in the past two weeks. Uh, because of those issues. I don't have a problem with the homeless camp there. I don't, I don't have a problem with whatsoever. Uh, as long as it's maintained properly, normally. Okay, but putting the fence across between me and the storage unit, then my fence will just be totally destroyed. Okay, the fence needs to be at the other end by Taylor. Okay, do you stop that flow? So they can, they have a, they have a clear path of Taylor. Okay, to get to the streets.
Senator Mayor, one of the things I appreciate is people from the homeless camp have been coming to council meetings. And you know, one of the things we could do is have a discussion with you. And instead of like treating you like you're second-class citizens or uh don't deserve whatever it is, give you your due respect and ask for your due respect back and not go in those areas. I mean, wouldn't that be the easiest solution? Okay.
We don't want to be second-class citizens either.
Right.
Forty years. And I feel like a second-class. And they're going to
Yeah.
So, you know, I know what it's like to have a neighborhood and I know what it's like to live in this camp. And uh, I'm still uh at the camp, but I would um you're right, discussion with the, with the residents there would be, you know, because we do have, that means we have mines that work.
Well, the point is, is that every group, whatever it is, has their bad apples. And uh, and you know who your bad apples are and there's not a lot we can do about fixing them. But, but at the same time, we know, having now been working with you, that you truly do want to step up and do that. And you do want to live in a home someday and you do want your own independent living. And we want to work with you and help you get there. And uh, at the same time, we'd expect you, if we ask you not to go that, maybe you could lead your people to not do it. It would save a whole lot of heartache. Right, right. And there's more new rules and regulations coming after my talk with the attorney this evening.
Yeah, great. I appreciate that.
Right.
Thanks. That's all I have. So on the public comment, the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. Uh, first one is Carolyn Barnett.
Good evening. Thanks. Carolyn Barnett, I live two three five North State Street in one of those tiny houses. Anyway, I rented, um, I walk my dog all over town. And I've noticed since I moved here a year ago that now some of the homeless people seem to be on the sidewalk and they threaten. In other words, they don't move, they tell me to move off the sidewalk. So I just wanted to bring that maybe to the attention of the police or something that it's dumb, but side, you know, bikes on sidewalks is still illegal. Kind of ordinance.
But I, you know that they're homeless?
Well, I think.
Are you just making an assumption?
Well, there's one guy that, yeah, he's screaming at me and those are not the homeless camp. Well, this guy was on a bike. He was a hundred yards away. He's screaming at me to get off the sidewalk. And I'm like, it's, it's a, you know, seven or eight foot sidewalk. Anyway, so.
Yeah.
Um, just if you could maybe tell the folks they barrel down on the it's not them. Who is?
If they're not out there. I'm sorry, but they're not out there. If she says it was a homeless person, they could be told.
Well, I didn't mean to stir up a fight. All I'm saying is uh, I do this all the time. I run into city hall. The chief will tell you, I say, hey, there's this person over there. And find out, no, they live up Second Street or Third Street and they have, you know, a brain disorder.
Be on the sidewalk with the bike barreling down.
Absolutely. Whether they're homeless or not homeless, right? Yeah.
All right. Well, I think our police heard, so hopefully they'll, they'll kind of keep an eye out for that and and do some extra patrol around and watch for that. So I appreciate that. Thank you. The next one, Karen Meyer.
Hey, I wanted to pass this out to you because I did a public request this week. And I was surprised with the response. And regarding the memorandum of agreement which is signed uh with Uncle Hard, and in the agreement it says that there is an executed lease executed at February first twenty twenty-three, which would have been two weeks before um the memorandum of agreement. So I thought it was funny that I didn't find the agreement in the, in the memorandum of agreement. I didn't find a lease and I thought it was funny that you would vote on it when you hadn't seen it. So I asked for it. And we went back and forth, back and forth, but the bottom line is so the MOA specifically states there is a lease executed on February first, twenty twenty-three. And you are telling me that's not true. Correct.
Yeah, I can answer that. It was intended to be, that was when we thought we were going to get D money and do a lease. So we didn't do a lease. There's no reason to do it. There's no money exchange or an agreement.
But the memorandum of agreement said that the lease had been executed.
That is kind of Wayne, Wayne's fault and my fault. We didn't catch it and take it out of the, uh, take it out of the MOA. That's all.
This is the whole problem that people are having with the village and with this whole thing. We don't get information that's correct. In, in the April meeting, you said that you haven't spent any general funds. And yet in the MOA, two months before, it said you'd spent two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You said you were using urban renewal money monies to buy land for tiny homes. Tell people here that you weren't. Um, and that same meeting, you said Uncle Hart has already received six hundred thousand dollars as, as of that April meeting. Uncle Hart came on that same meeting and said, we have no money. We've worked on that with one, nine thousand dollars to do everything we have. Then in the August meeting, you said in, in reference to something I said, I said Wayne has no money. You said, well, he does now. We have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar commitment from Senate. Then in September, you say the bill for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was fairly confident about. Um. And we don't know, you can sit here and say, call the office, call the officers. What good is that going to do, Sean? And call the office because we get.
Erin, are you mixing capital money up with operating money? Do you know which is coming up from? You say just, you're just talking about money here, but a capital would be for the lease. Operating is of a different nature.
I'm talking about different conflicting statements that Jerry has made. Okay?
I can't say, okay, uh, that one. I don't know.
Okay.
I'd say capital and operating is. I'd say thank you for your comments and will answer your questions at the next council meeting.
I have one more question. Um, two times I've seen it go to the check register as an expense checked on Call Heart. One time, Kami said it's a loan. It's been repaid. It was for six thousand dollars. I saw one in August. And it was for twelve thousand dollars and it just said on the description it was a loan. And I think, I think you have a kind of experience. Have you ever seen a loan directly expensed rather than as an account receivable?
No, but I'm.
I can answer. It's put into the expense category because I'm not moving it into an accounts receivable. It would look more like I was trying to cover up something if I put it up in the balance sheet as far as my auditor is concerned. When money flows out, it should be coming out of a line item as far as they're concerned. Anything I have up in accounts receivable has to be thoroughly justified as opposed to an appropriation that's in a line item category.
I'm going to ask this question. You told me to ask it when I you said, ask Kami at the meeting. You knew you can ask it. I'm asking.
Well, that's where you've also been.
This is two different subjects.
This is better. Get thirty minutes. I'll see you talk to you later if you'd like.
So I'll ask you. If something happens, Kami, who's going to know that, that Uncle Hart owes the city six thousand for eighteen thousand dollars when it's already been expensed?
Dana McCauley.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Dana McCauley. I live at two three five North State Street. Very concerned about the speed on that street. There's no sign. It said twenty miles an hour. Go around the corner and go up towards open. There should be. There was and it's gone. Uh, and the sign up there, it says twenty miles an hour. We have children. My granddaughter almost got hit the other day. And I'm not blaming the police because they do a good job. But we need to, we need a crosswalk at the second and going over. And I'm not blaming the police because they do a good job, but we need to, we need a crosswalk at the second and going over towards Eagles. And that would help a lot. What would it take to just paint a crosswalk across there?
That's actually a county portion of the road. Kind of. I mean, so not saying that we can't work in conjunction with them, but uh.
We can, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not gonna have my grandchildren run home. I just won't have it. And I don't want any of my, my tenants to have children. I'm the manager there. Been there eight years. And I'm not gonna have any of those children killed or my elderly people that walk across there. I went out there and stopped cars the other day to get this. The scaly, uh, stroller, the two babies stopped. They wouldn't stop. They just race up. Now, when they hit this corner, they just go zoom. And they're flying. They're not doing twenty miles an hour.
Yeah, I'm a little.
Yeah.
And the noise.
Are you crossing State Street?
Yeah.
State, State and Second.
Yeah, State, yeah. There should be a crosswalk there with a sign. I think myself personally. I, like I said, I'm not blaming the police department because they do a great job. But something needs to be done, please.
We have the same situation in conference. We have a sign. And.
If they just put a crosswalk in there with a sign, I think that would make a big difference. Cause I have a lot of children crossing there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no, no other comments? Maybe it, yes? Jerry, as to brick three twenty-sixth Hawthorne Street. What I would like to see with the village is that there is no longer. Any type of dropping off like materials, clothing, bedding, anything. Uh, no food delivered, all of this stuff be taken to a church. And dispensed from that point, rather than it being taken down there and. Left to.
Pardon me, pardon me. Hey! There's somebody talking right now. We're jabbering.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, just to have a central place for them to come to and get. They need a new pair of shoes or whatever. If they're gonna be provided a meal, they can go there, sit down, eat the meal. And it's not left on the ground or whatever they wanna do with it, okay? I'm just thinking. Have a responsible place for them to go, get what they need and then go back to the village.
And that's what I do. I pick up the donations and I make sure where they go and they're stored in my church.
Well, then, then we want all of it to go to your church and we want all the food materials to go to church. Okay, then they can walk up to the pantry and get us there.
Why, why can't they have this? Yeah, it's, it's distributed at camp. We have a church that delivers on Monday, Wednesday to the. To after everybody else. And we eat there at our homes. I mean, you don't have to go weeks from.
Have you looked at the place lately?
Okay.
You know, it's getting cleaned up.
Yes, I know and I realize.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could just interrupt everyone. So we need to sort of follow the, the public meetings, rules and guidelines because especially for. Those people who are attending, it's impossible to hear anything going on and we can't really have this back and forth with.
Yes, I, I encourage everybody to come next month and let's read the presentation. Um, and we'll have more information on that. I thank everybody for coming tonight. I appreciate it.
You know, I kind of don't, in the fifties, you know, black people moving in the neighborhoods.